Philadelphia.
I was.
Last police shot.
I did not see that.
Yeah.
I have them at home to see that.
I think they're all okay. The guy was reloading. Did you get him?
And mine got injured on the way.
Oh, really?
But they're all okay.
Right?
Okay, so, two parade, two not parade, two fest or not the fest. So, the number of things, the C Street we were just discussing, they should be off Main Street by three o'clock.
Four o'clock, three thirty at the right.
I mean, they're heading down.
Yeah.
I mean, they're gonna be, so I don't think they're a problem at all.
What I can do is ask them to bring up only one boat.
I would stay with what we got.
Okay.
They're gonna be down there. I don't think that's a problem. I don't want to lose quantity.
Good point.
I don't think that'll be a problem, or else I would say, yeah, it's a half an hour. So, the parades, since I'm not familiar and haven't been partaking in the parade, I'd love to dress up.
You should.
Anyway, I know. It starts at five, right? But when do people get there? And they congregate at the lawn, that's where the parade starts. And then, so when do people start?
It seems like they just collect at five and start marching at five thirty, but I...
No, they collect at four thirty.
Four thirty and start at five, okay. There, Marie's got the details.
And so then, if they start at five, then they go, or down Main Street, and they go to the dock.
Great.
And so, that's gotta take twenty minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say at least, I'd stretch it to at least a half hour, forty minutes.
It's a decent sized parade.
Yeah, no, it's...
It's the biggest parade.
Yep.
Okay.
Better than ours.
So, that takes us a half an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, then, we shut off Fair Streets one way for the church, which is five o'clock for the mass.
Four thirty, I wanna, I really started, because people get there early, so I do it at four thirty to about six fifteen for Saturday night.
So, it's what time, five?
Four thirty to six fifteen, Fair Street.
Fair Street.
Yeah, there's one way going straight down from Maine to northern.
And that's at four?
That's four thirty to six fifteen approximately.
Okay, so in a way, that's good, because traffic wouldn't be coming out that anyway. So, any traffic coming from John's event would be going up Northern Avenue or heading...
Up Fair to nine D, and then they can go either north or south.
Okay. And usually, do we block up the other streets anyway, so no one's coming through there to get to Main Street for the parade?
Yes. We usually have, I'll have officers jump the parade, or we'll put up cones real quick, and then as soon as the parade goes, they pick the cones up.
Okay. So, in a way, so that's not a problem, do you feel, like, the event, any, or, I mean, we can move the event time later, an hour, if that helps? Or if it's at five, and people start leaving a little before then, is that better? What works with you?
I was thinking about it last night, and I think we can make it work. If you wanted to stretch it a little bit, just a little bit later, so people, the vendors leave, to make sure everything's all done and finished, then the signs would come down off Fair Street, the parade would be done already, and stuff like that. If you could stretch yours a maybe...
And did it at six?
Yeah.
I think that'd be good. I know the sun sets at six, but it doesn't mean it's dark at six. It's still, probably still light till maybe six.
They'll be wrapping it up, probably wait before six anyway.
Yeah, they start.
And then, just, they have to go left instead of going right. So, if they go to nine D, it'd make it, just avoid the whole Main Street area to begin with, I think it'd be good.
Yeah. So, just make that part of the thing, that like, everyone leaving has to go north?
Yep. Yep. I can leave, I can leave Fair Street one way, a little longer, till like, seven o'clock, and have the "do not enter" sign, so they can't go towards Main Street, and they have to go that way. Either they go north or they gotta go to nine D. I think that would solve all our problems right there.
Okay, so, but if they're leaving at the same time, I mean, not that they're all gonna leave at the same event time, but if the church, if Mass is over at six fifteen, is that gonna interfere with them leaving?
Nope. No, because most people park in the lot, and whoever does it, there's probably about ten cars from beginning of the church, they'll just go up northern.
I have a question, just a crazy possible idea is to move the parade to Sunday, just so that it's not all happening on one day, so that you guys aren't like, bam bam bam, against each other.
My guys being here, they'd rather, once they're here, that's the hardest part, they'll work ten hours if they have to, and it won't, it wouldn't be a big deal.
Right.
Like, the parade's nice, and it's usually cheerful, and guys like, you know, we like, enjoy that. The boat's usually not a big deal, because I have, I'll have Nico, who will be working, I'll have the day tour guy on, and if we feel that we need to put one other officer on for the day to actually just get cases, like, extra foot traffic, I can do that. That wouldn't be a problem. Bring them in at like, you know, twelve o'clock, at twelve to eight, I can do that. That could be, and, you know, and a little extra there. But I don't think, the way things it sounds, as long as everything is planned, now, something happens where, for some reason, that the parade winds up going later, which it shouldn't, but some whatever, then that would put a monkey on your shit. Other than that, boat people, like I said, they're ready, they're on their way out there at three thirty, they're on the boat, or they're gone. They don't wait for anybody. The parade starts at five, they're done. You figure by six o'clock, the latest, they're done. You guys are ending right about six, and just push them towards nine D and northern.
I was hoping to have a bunch of vendors, try to get the restaurants afterwards and stuff, you know?
Yeah.
Cater the town, but I don't know how, like, you know, when the C Street comes in, it seems like they get hammered. You know, I'm gonna try to sort of promote our growers and vendors, you know, after the festival, they don't get something invited.
Yeah, they can. I mean, that's fine.
You just have to walk.
I mean, they can.
Yeah, 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 right. That's it.
Yeah, yeah.
One other thing is, oh, is it four hours that we have to give officers if they come in if it's at six?
Uh, four.
So, it's four anyway. So, it kind of might work out better if you are here.
Yeah, I mean, uh...
I would all along with you.
And the rain date for the parade is Sunday.
Sunday, right.
Yeah, because the day tour guy can stay, he gets off at four. Hey, listen, do me a favor, stay till six. And whatever is, usually, they'll be, unless they're going to another job, which I'll, I'll know way in advance, if we okay this, like, in the next couple of days, or whatever, I'll give them a heads up. If you work in the day shift, then you'd probably work until six o'clock, or seven. And if it's really, really crowded, which I don't think it would be, I can always extend it. Or I can put, like I said, I'm kind of a floater, I can make myself available, put myself on, and I could cover...
And then the sheriffs offer us something for the parade?
Um, I will reach out to them. It's never definite, it's a favor to me, it's a law enforcement type, you know, favor. They've done it in the past, I don't think, as long as he has, as long as he knows in advance, I don't think it's a problem. Like, when we changed the fireworks, I was able to get a couple of extra guys, even though it was like, kind of a last minute, that's what I was worried about. Because they have other things in the county that they can't turn us, listen, I can guarantee you two extra guys. And now, when we switched it, we were lucky to get the bike guys, which they worked perfect.
Bike guys at great, and that canine?
Yep. So, like I said, as long as we have an advance notice, and I can tell, hey, listen, can you give me two extra guys? I'll leave it to them. He'll ask me, how many guys you want? If I can get two, that would be great.
But what does that mean for the Hops Fest? How many people do you have to have down there?
Uh, depending on the amount of people, again, I don't know if John's gonna do what the, what the Wine Fest did, have your own security in the gate, if that's the case.
No, no, we would do, like, last time you did, is you had, I think, two officers in the car at the entrance, why do you need anyone else there?
No, we can, we can do that, but if you know for a fact you're gonna get a thousand, close to that, I would like to have at least another officer in on that.
Okay.
And I will contact the sheriff either way, and say, listen, we have a big event, can you have your zone two guy, or maybe an extra guy floating around, specifically stay in that area?
Uh, you, who would you have to main traffic at the red line?
Uh, for...
The parade?
Um, I'll be there, I'll be there that day, and I'll, you know, whatever officer's available.
Okay. As opposed to the sheriffs?
No, no, that'll be us. The parade will take care of everything else, we'll just ask the sheriff for the overflow.
Gotcha.
If John gets eight, nine hundred people, say, listen, we're really kind of jammed up here. Because like I said, you're gonna have the boat people in, you're gonna have that, the, once the parade's done, well, actually, once three thirty's gone, the boat people will be gone. So, that alleviates a lot of that.
Yep.
And then I'll have enough guys, like I said, the day tour guy will be there, I'll be around, that'll be me, and maybe one other guy, and depending how many we look at for the thing.
Right, right.
But I think two will cover the front, like that, that would be, that would be good. Again, if the numbers are between five and eight hundred, gets any more than that, then I'd definitely add a third officer to walk around, and so, one or two guys walk, I don't want somebody by themselves. We'll leave one guy at the gate, two guys walking, like we do at the Oktoberfest, they kind of just walked in and out of the crowd to make sure, hey, we're here.
Yep.
So...
What about traffic control, though?
Traffic control with the signs and with the guys that I have, will actually take care of itself. I'm not changing any, I'm not gonna close any other blocks like that, other than the ones I normally do, which would be Fair Street for church anyway. So, we'll leave Fair Street closed until we see, hey, the pedestrian traffic is eased up, it's open the road again, and we just pull, you know, just pull a sign and make it a two-way. So, it's not really closing anything that we normally don't. And if there's traffic overflow, that's something we'll have to deal with. That's something I may have to, I mean, if it's getting really bad with cars, that's where the sheriff will come in. And I'll say, listen, I need the two guys to do the traffic and push everybody towards nine D, nine fair, and then have them go north or south.
And John, you're trying to arrange for transportation from Metro North?
With the trolley, I'm gonna try to and stuff. A lot of people walk down that, though, but I know there was no traffic, cars on that other side of the road at our festival. You know, like, our website's pretty clear, when you come here, take the train, walk, stroll through Cold Spring.
Yep.
There's no parking by our festival, so it sits there right now, the website, it's been there.
Yeah, I think you guys were pretty good with the last one.
Yeah.
You know, I looked at the number of tickets were written, it wasn't that many, it was pretty clear, I mean, unlike the Wine Fest, where they kind of just park wherever they wanted to.
Yeah.
Even with our signs, I mean, we can't have signs every ten feet. So, I know, I know you mentioned last night, like, in the city, they'll, they'll put a sign on one block and say, no parking with an arrow from this sign to the following sign this way. I guarantee you, if you have that any more, more than twenty feet, they're still gonna say, well, I didn't see that other sign down there, I thought I could park ten feet from the sign. So, I mean, that, and we'll never have the signs up in time for that, but he keeps it controlled, so listen.
I mean, we could put the cones with the sticks on, which works well for a year down the other side.
We can do that, yeah, if you want to put cones up, I can...
You know, let's do it the whole length of the road, too, you know?
I can, I can do that.
Just alleviate anybody getting hurt, you know, because you wanna have the cars parking at the field, where there's thirty-five spots.
But we haven't agreed that we're gonna have thirty-five spots at the field.
In front of, in front of.
On the field, is it?
Yeah.
No, on the street.
On the street.
Yep. On this side of the fence.
You don't have thirty, you don't have thirty-five spots there?
Yeah, there is.
No, you don't.
How many?
Nineteen, I think. Uh, 'cause I looked at it to see whether or not it would be worthwhile to put a four meter there. It's nineteen.
Totally eighteen?
Yeah.
All right, and out of those, what I discussed last night, if you're gonna have handicap people, really, I don't know if it's a state or federal law, where you have to have handicap spots right by, right by, I think, we can put them up and take them down, you know, with a sign, the first couple of spots.
Well, I like the, I like the idea of the pavilion parking being restricted to handicap people.
But also, depending how they walk, because if they're, it's a long walk from the pavilion all the way to the front gate, that's a whole...
Yeah, but our ticket's, our ticket's gonna be, our ticket's gonna be in the pavilion.
It's gonna be right there? And do that, because I know, I knew you had...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This time, we want to walk from the pavilion and drive into the field.
That's perfect. That's perfect. I think that would be great, and have them right on that one left-hand side as soon as we go in.
You know, and our thoughts were, you know, to have like, a warning tape to block off the baseball field.
Yep.
You know, because we don't wanna have, right, anybody driving on the field anymore, so our thoughts were, you know, put warning tape or the fence from first base to second base, over to the third base, and that's what we were planning on doing, you know, if you guys want us to.
I would do at least ten feet into the outfield on that. Just don't do it with the, what they do, is go ten feet past that into the grass.
And if you had a sign at the entrance to the pavilion, the car, uh, handicap parking only, that would be great.
Did you see?
We would like to.
So, before we, we're a little ahead of ourselves.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, I think the first reason why we had this, had the chamber here, so we know that we can work around the parade end, have Larry some time to think about it from last night. So, it sounds like we can go with it?
Yep. It sounds like.
My guys will be here, if you get the guys, or when we know this, or whatever. I mean, I think it's, if we don't have the police, then we don't, we either gotta split the days, or have, you know, if these guys are willing to move, we can do that. That means we have to bring in police for that day, though, for four hours, for two hours.
What's the minimum that, of...
Four hours.
Four hours.
It's either eight or four.
So, it's actually better to have it all in there, for that reason?
How many do you get, you usually bring, if it was just a parade and nothing else?
The parade, I ask the volunteers, I usually get three, and they come in for, they come in for the four hours.
Plus the people that are on?
Of working, yeah. Or the day tour guy, the regular.
So, what's the total?
Four.
Four. Plus Nico?
Uh, yeah, Nico, Nico's, he's here until, yeah, until, again, he's only doing traffic enforcement, he's not, we're not gonna use him for any type of traffic post or anything like that.
Okay. So, if we had four, and then we have four, and is that, well, would we bring them in? Would we bring them in for the parade, or when we bring the other four guys?
I would...
Starting with the parade and have them work that night?
I probably would either do it that way, and this way, guys are in, I need less guys, 'cause I don't want guys leaving and trying to get other guys to come in, 'cause if they can commit to me for that day, you're committing, they pretty much know they're gonna commit to me for at least eight hours. And they say, I can work this, and I tell them, listen, you gotta commit for the whole eight hours, I can't commit just for four. If I get stuck at the end, and, you know, John says, I got a thousand guys, and I can say, listen, two slots, just hold them up for four hours, I need you here from, say, two to, two to six, you know, 'cause there's so many people.
Right.
I may get one or two guys that are close, that wanna come in and get the extra four. But I'll do this way beforehand. I'm gonna put out, if we do okay this, I will put out an email tomorrow, saying, listen, this is what's going on, this is what I need, I need volunteers now, I need you to commit to this now.
John, you're just...
Well, volunteers for the parade.
No, no, for my guys, just for my officers.
You're just on the one day, definitely?
Yeah, just one day.
Okay, so you guys okay with...
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're gonna, we're gonna move ahead with it.
All right.
Okay, and then, so the next step is, we'll ask you to add to our application, or the requirements, I think, and things we need to do with parking.
Right, right. Exactly. You'll just, you're gonna discuss that, I don't know if you, you don't need me, if you're gonna make decisions, or, you know, probably stay around.
Well, no, I think you'll stay.
I just think we've decided that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, I, no, it's not about the approval.
Okay.
I'm going from the, you know, we have a new map, I can pass it around, I didn't make copies of it.
So, a couple of things that I don't think are on there, that you probably have any, we gotta put in there, is an ambulance, the need for an ambulance.
Right.
So, we have to do that, and I would like to have a letter saying that they're, you know, it's a definite.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that you wouldn't, but I think, you know, just moving ahead, you know, like, if we don't have that, and somebody goes, oh, yeah, we have someone here, and then you go down there, and there's no ambulance there. So, I'd like to have a letter from a service.
The ambulance corps?
Yeah, we get from, yeah.
The ambulance corps, feedback. The ambulance here.
Right. So, I think we need that in the application.
Oh, in the application, actually.
That you have to have an ambulance, and we need a letter from them saying...
When do you want the, the letter from the service, by when?
I don't know, a week before, or just before, so we know they're gonna be there.
Yep.
Well, I reached out to Chief Falcone.
Yep, Nick, I'm, I'm...
You know, he's a good guy, so he sent me over a quote, and, you know, Big Bill, and so, and he was very, this is really great.
And then we'll add that to the application.
Feedback's very good, and I have a good rapport with Nick, and then, of course, and all the guests, and girls.
Limiting the, the handicap parking at the pavilion, they have to definitely have handicap plates or tags or stickers or something.
I wanna get, what they're, you're saying your entrance is now gonna be at the pavilion?
Right, yeah.
So, that's where people are gonna come in?
For his event.
Yeah.
For his event.
That's right.
And also saying that they get a handicap park by the pavilion, but if the entrance is there, that's not...
No, no, so we wanted to have the entrance, we looked at it a little bit more, what seems like a nice spot to have an entrance is actually right where the dugout is. Do you know where the dugout, the street dugout?
Has a double gate.
There's a, there's a single gate, so...
Well, double, yeah, one tandem, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
To go in there, and then go in between the two fences.
Yeah.
So, there's about ten, fifteen foot area.
Right.
And then you can stay along the fence.
Right, okay.
Okay, stay along the fence, and rope it off or fence it off, so there's like a ten, fifteen foot hallway that they would walk through, walk along the fence, along the other dugout, you know, past the flagpole.
So, you're going in north, you're going west in the gate, going north along the dugout, going towards the pavilion, and that back west, and then past the second.
Yeah, yeah, no, and then going, and there's a gate right there past the dugout, and that's where we would enter the people and stuff, right there.
Right. And no exiting there whatsoever?
Right.
Right?
Exit is at the other, yeah, exit is at the other end, that's not.
Okay.
Exit and re-entry, but we're not sure about that.
Okay.
But exit on the other end, where we originally had them coming in.
So, if you have cars driving into park at the pavilion, people entering, it will not be...
Right, they won't be impacted, because they, they would be on the south side in willow trees. You know, so, oh, yeah, yeah.
This would be even better there.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a dugout here, and there's an entrance right there.
Right, so you come in here, and then you, this is nice, it's a nice, like, hallway, you go in here, and then you come along here, and we were gonna put a big tent here, and then the people would come in through the tent, through past some rattle prizes and stuff, but not on the baseball field, because this is much further, but not on the baseball field, and then they walk like this.
Yeah.
And the handicap spots would be here?
You could have, well, you could end, have the handic, you know, there's a lot of parking over there, you know?
Depends on how many, how many cars we actually want in there, we don't want a lot of cars in there.
Right.
You know, if it's dry, you've got...
Yeah, but we don't want a lot of cars in there. We wanna limit to what?
Well, that's it, I mean, we have to, we have to make a decision, because the Reclamation Commission's gonna, are we down there checking the water content of the, you know, of the field? I mean, we know it's always bad at the other end, but, I mean, how many cars do you wanna park? I mean, you, if I'm not mistaken, you put a snow fence up from the end of the dugout across the, in front of the pavil, in front of the pavilion, this building itself.
Right, that would be like lock.
You had, you did that?
Yeah.
But it didn't, you did not have that on your site plan, that you were gonna have parking here?
Right.
Okay. So, so when, who parked there?
Our vendors, no guests, just the vendors who are working.
And now the vendors are gonna park up at the highway garage?
They have them there, too.
What?
You had the...
Well, you remember, you have about sixty or seventy, you know, vehicles.
No, as I'm just saying, you had vendors behind the highway department, too.
We did, correct.
And so, these people here are all vendors?
They were vendors there, and vendors up there. You have sixty or seventy courts, right?
I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just clarifying, who's, you know, so these people aren't driving in and out, these are people who are parking for the day.
Right, they're, they're, correct. And, you know, we've, you know, we had the Oktoberfest, I'm there for five years, which I organized, and I should be able to organize Oktoberfest, and that was a great spot to have the people working the festival, parking there and stuff, you know, because there is, they didn't have the option, or we never talked about the highway department, which is a great option.
Somebody had a great idea there.
Yeah. The only issue with that, as we all know, if you get a couple of days of really bad rain, that's where the water all sits, right, on that left-hand side of the pavilion.
So, you're never going here?
We're gonna, he's gonna take this off here.
So, nothing here?
No, 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 nothing behind the pavilion.
Nothing was...
Oh, did you need to copy that, that we're writing all over?
No, I'm marking things that have to be, that have to be clear, you know, clearer on the map, that gates need to be on the map, that are on the fence between the pavilion and the Mayor's Park.
Never pass the restaurant, so...
The dugouts have to be marked more clearly, because obviously, people in the villages are those boxes for dugouts, so, not the argument, yeah, but so, so I did, that's the question, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's up to the trustees to decide, 'cause we have to have, I think, I think the application needs to be tighter, and it needs to be clear with the ambulance, with the parking.
Well, a couple of easy ones, is one, whatever we allow, we don't allow past there, that front, past that point, at the start of the, of the pavilion, you know, if you wanna put tents back here, or whatever, that's fine, but we can't have vehicles back there[1342.12] If you wanna put tents back here or whatever, that's fine, but we, we can't have vehicles back there just in case of the weather, or we just don't want them back there.
Well, also, for me, if, if we have to get all these people off that field in a hurry, you have the exit gate here, and that's gonna be a main exit gate there. You're not gonna get anybody coming through this small old corridor, it's too, they're pushing it too much into a funnel, and that's just a disaster if something bad happens. So, we'd have emergency exit here and here, with the double gates to throw them wide open and get people out.
So, that means you cut parking, some of those gates.
So then where would you, where would you let parking here, if we wanted to have parking in here, uh, where would you put it so that we kept that free?
I would put this, I know, I, I remember from the Oktoberfest, over here is where you put just a handicap, I wouldn't put anybody then just a handicap here, and leave this wide open.
No, he's saying-
Oh, that's a really great spot for parking.
Yeah, but they were saying, the same way I want them.
The thing of it is, if you got a ton of cars there and I gotta get four, four hundred people through there, the cars are in the way, I'm talking, you know, worst-case scenario, active shooter or whatever.
Right.
Uh, I need to get people out in a hurry, and if they're, you got all cars jammed here, you're putting everybody into a funnel.
Can I make a suggestion that we say how many parking spaces, and we, you and I go down and we mark where those parking spaces can be on the map, so people could fully understand, you know, where the gates are, and what has to be left free, and how many cars can park?
I think it's a good ide- I, I think it's a good idea, you can see if you can max it, so if we can put a few there, it's up to you.
Yeah, as long as I have a, a big flow to get them out, a little bit here and a little bit here, I wouldn't mind, but enough where I can get, you know, at least four or five wide to get through, to get it through there.
But not like, not like thirty cars on there.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that's a good point you said, because you know, this is actually a, a single gate, and that's a little single gate, you just said.
Yep. That's why, that's why-
Maybe that, that needs to be wide and-
I can't let anybody, once, once they go in this gate, you'll get somebody going the other way, it's too much of a tight.
There's a double one up here, but that's not gonna get you.
You're gonna get a wrong one.
No, you're stuck, you're stuck, you're stuck in there anyway, you're running to the mud, into the cove. Uh, again, I always say worst-case scenario-
The map needs to include the gates and the width of the gates, to make it clearer and think other things marked, okay, I've got that, my list to do. And you and I can go down there, like, within, you know, a week, and we can look at that and say, okay, these, this is the designated parking area, and only cars parked there for evacuation purposes.
And so that would be vendors only and handicap, and so I would say handicap would be primary.
Yep.
Yep. And then after that, whatever's left could be used for vendors. And so you guys decide, and then John's gonna have to enforce that, and we'll put that somewhere on our map.
Yeah, right.
Okay, now, we, uh, we also wanna include on the application now, that if it's a ticketed event with vendors, that they must rent the highway area, so that's, so can you tell me how much we charge for that, so we can-
What do we start?
Six hundred dollars.
Home?
I'd do is three hundred or three fifty.
Three fifty.
I, I go with six hundred.
And, and whoever, going forward, they need to supply a parking attendant.
We need to have somebody.
Yeah.
John, you did well, there was no issues with that, uh, it was-
Yeah, we had somebody going up there, taking people up there, so, but I know that gas tanks are the key.
We gotta fill them up, yep, and, and if, and if yours is not, but if extends into Sunday, we gotta get the garbage truck out to pick all the garbage up for the village, and our normal procedure. Which Bugsy said there were, again, it didn't start till twelve, so that was clear, we had no problem getting the truck out, it was later on when I drove up there, and people were like all over the place.
So, that's again Saturday versus Sunday truck, okay?
So, we definitely need to append it up there.
Maybe we need the same thing.
It would be, it should be the same thing.
So, I'll, we'll have to-
We need a map of the highway department.
Will you have signs made up so that it's, there's vendors with an arrow going into that?
Well, that's good.
Because I did one in the morning, but we need something that we can put up for every event, cause it's hard to see that.
Late, you know, going forward, an arts fair or something.
It's tough to explain it to the people just before, but after the fancy-
There's a, there's a, uh, there's a street number.
It's really tough.
Oh, for the highway garage, right there, highway garage, but that, that big, right?
Yes.
One forty-nine, right?
One forty-three, one forty-nine.
What is the address of Mayor's Park?
Mayor's Park is, uh-
Because it says different number, it's a different, wrong number, I think, on Google.
I don't know.
Says one oh five on, on Google.
I'll go with that.
Close enough.
I think that's, uh, the palatary's house.
What, what do you guess?
So, we'll have signs made up, I think that you should have cards made up to put in windshield, that, you know, people go up there, and so that they know.
And their sign, yeah, yeah, yep.
And then if you have a parking attendant, somebody should be up there, and then they can make sure, and if they don't have one in there, then-
That's good.
Then they can get a ticket, and they'll be happy.
And their sign.
I'm sure a lot of people got tickets this weekend, they're happy.
Seventy-six?
Did you get a lot of phone calls?
No, it's been quiet.
Yeah, seventy-six, on Saturday, Saturday and Sunday.
But they don't look in.
That must've been a record, huh?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it was, it was, it was pretty good.
How much a ticket?
I don't, that I don't know, they're all different, twenty-five to fifty, unless they park in a handicap, and that's a hundred and twenty-five.
Where are the handicaps?
These festivals are real loud.
I'm just saying the highest one.
Well, the people come up here thinking, because we're a small village, they're dumb.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start packing now.
They're ruleless, lawless around here.
Yeah.
They can do what they want.
Whole can stay.
Good luck.
They've never been to Cold Spring before.
I don't know where they go, though, but they can do whatever they want.
We, we know, we know about that, the handicap sign on Sun Street, the illegal one, we just, we just gotta take-
We're just gonna move it to my side of the street, not get a handicap sticker.
Maybe she just take it down.
I'm sure I'll need it by the end of this year.
Okay, the other thing, I mean, and I don't know if we can do this or not, is there any way, is there any kind of signs that makes sense, that for temporary, that we put up along the whole fence, along this whole side, that would, you know, so kind of eliminate people from parking there all day?
We can, uh, if you want, yeah, we can put up, um-
I mean, does that make sense?
The day of the event?
How long do people usually park there? They usually stay the whole day?
People were coming and going in those spots, and I don't know if they were like from town or from festival.
I was just wondering if there's people that park there for going hiking and then taking up a lot of spots.
If we have nineteen spots, correct?
Yeah.
I will take your word for it, uh, I can have the midnight guy on Friday night, uh, put the, if there's somebody parked there on Friday night, they're gonna stay until they move, but I can have him put the cones out on the midnight, so, I mean, right from the crack of dawn, nobody parks there until their, their parking people come.
Yeah, because we need that open for like the vendors, you know?
And just move the cone, and they can park in there.
Right.
That'll leave you to hikers.
And then you'll take the cones away, and that, and so people can start parking there?
Yeah, if that's, you know, if that's, if that wants to be done, actually, I'd leave, I'd leave it to what was running the, the event, cause I-
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
That's what he gave me last time, he gave me the cones, and I took some morning tape, and I just like kept that sort of clean.
So, we, we, we kept that closed, so other people couldn't park there?
Yeah, front of Mayor's Park, yeah.
Just to lay events there.
There was, I mean, years ago, we were gonna put signs on the fence that say parking for Mayor's Park events, you know, like if there's a game or something, that parking was gonna be for that. We just never got around doing that, because there, there's times when there are no events there.
It is, most of the times, there's no, there's no events.
And that's not even putting poles up at this point, you can put them, attach them right to the fence.
That makes an offense, yeah.
So, we could have some more ones made, you know, but do you think that would make sense?
Well, the cone, the cone, I mean, I have enough cones now, the nineteen would work, and as soon as the event starts, just pull them all in a pile, and we'll have Bugsy guys or Marty, come and put them in the truck and take them back.
All right, that'll be up to you, John.
That's good, that's what we did last time, it's up in the, put all the cones together nice pile, pile.
Okay.
So.
We'll set the ones up at the garage where we want them, right, I mean?
Well, if he's gonna have a, if he's gonna have a, a parking tent up there, the only ones I put up are around, around the gas tanks, and I put them across from the start of our building, or, or over to the river, so nobody goes back where the police vehicles are.
Right, right.
So, you know where there is, so that you can-
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, know beyond the building and stuff, Bugsy had told me, he usually has the garbage truck there, and then he just doesn't want anybody going in the back, because they park from their cars.
Yep. Right.
That's where their props are in, yeah.
You know, that's all we're good for this event, but I think, to me, every time we have one of these events, we have to fine tune the application, and so-
We're gonna tweak it for a while till we really get it down with that.
I know, and so I'm thinking that we still need to go up there and see where people can park, and that should be attached to the application, because we're talking about this event, and then another event, another event, rather than redoing it all the time.
I think we're gonna have to redo it all the time, especially, especially for the highway garage, because give or take, how many trucks we're gonna have in the future or not, and where they have to be moved from, it's always gonna change. You're not gonna have a set amount of spots where you can say, hey, listen, we can guarantee you forty spots, we numbered them, this is what it is, because sometimes, you know, if, if anything goes on, the fire, the fire company has parked their trucks down there on certain events, I don't wanna give somebody false hope in saying, you guaranteed forty spots, and then something happens. So, as the event, as you say, listen, you gotta give us the, the application has to be, if you have an event, it has to be within the month of the event, or a month and a half of the event, so that we can pop properly plan, and I can see if there's anything going on, is there any, do, you know, the fire trucks have to go down there, you know, Bugsy or whatever, how many vehicles you think we can move, then we can say, okay, now we can guarantee you this many spots, and this is how they have to be parked. That's gonna change with the events.
I'll also make a sign that, well, I made a temporary one that said parking with an arrow, so they weren't going into the highway, whether they did or not, I don't know.
No, they just, they, they just barbed the gas tanks, they didn't, they didn't go within the, the, I couldn't get to the, to that, that's what it was, it was, it almost looked like a wagon train.
John's entrance here will alleviate the problem of backing up the people to get in, which is, which is good.
Yep. And the highway depart, the water department, I think, put up their own cones, uh, for the event on Saturday, on Saturday, Sunday, which worked out great too, I think they coordinated, cause I try to leave that open for them to get in and out.
Just in case they need to get in.
But, yeah, if you're gonna not do-
They did the whole grass area and stuff too, huh?
Yeah, they, yeah, they, they blocked, blocked right.
Because there was a lot of cars parked there.
Right, but if you're not gonna have that entrance there, and that's only gonna be an emergency exit, I'm just not, I'm not gonna worry about that, we'll still put, you know, the, the tape off, but-
Well, they worked there on Saturday.
Yep.
Yes, they have a crew there.
Oh, okay.
And also-
And Sunday.
I think there was a lot of miscommunication, that's the idea of miscommunication, and people would say, well, I told, I just don't like to park here, you know, versus the, so that leaves our guys in a hard position, that they go to move somebody or say something, and say, well, you know, so-and-so told me I could park here.
I, that's why my phone's always on, I got about four phone calls that day on, who'll park where, and where was I told, and-
David, is the board gonna take a formal vote approving the application right now? You just said it's everyone okay.
Yeah, we can do that, and we'll nod our heads, is that gonna happen? Everyone says yes, not.
Yes.
Before you do that, what other time do you, do you wanna have our craft beer festival, we want to six, and then at six, that makes sense, because you're gonna stay on it, okay?
You're gonna be getting dark.
Sun sets at six, sun sets-
Do you have suns at one?
We had, Doug said, Doug said last night, five fifty-nine of that day on his phone.
I don't, I don't think you wanna go later.
No, I don't wanna go later, no, I, almost-
No, six, six.
Six, but at six o'clock, he's gotta have all of his vendors grabbing things up, digging things out, and it's gonna be getting dark, so, it seems to me, enough for an October event, maybe you do wanna end at five o'clock.
I would be, I would prefer to go noon to five, but I wasn't sure about the, and it's gonna take time for them to break down, so they're not leaving like in attendance at the five.
We can, we can do that, as long as I keep that block Fair Street one-way, nobody goes up, so that's fine, if you wanna leave it at five, I can do that too.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, yeah, I would prefer that too, just to keep it away from darkness, you know, maybe, maybe we'll, maybe we'll have to pay for it, but maybe, um, maybe we need a police officer at, at the end of Fair Street at nine D.
Yep.
I don't know, that's probably, just a lot of people that get out, you know, because then it'll avoid a, a lot of problems for the people who live at the end of the street there, and-
And just, and direct traffic. Yeah. I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I can, I can swing someone down, or I can ask one of the sheriffs to give me a hand, just, just direct traffic for, you know, twenty minutes, half hour to get the cars out.
Because we can then tell all our people, you're going that way.
Oh, and, and you go right or left, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, so let's go back to the parade, cause we just said it was gonna go over at six, so that it wouldn't impact the time of the parade, people leaving in the parade.
It's not gonna impact anything if I keep everybody off Main Street, which we already just discussed.
So, we just wanna go back to that again, cause, you know.
I mean, I, I kinda, I leave it up to you guys to decide, but I'm always a fan of giving space between things for timing, if there is any emergencies or anything, it is nice to have a little bit of wiggle room in there. So, if we move the parade forward, starting, gathering at four o'clock instead of four thirty, that might be a better way to go about it, and I would support that, but I'm, again, I leave it up to you guys, this is more-
If you wanna give us a little bit of a buffer on a half hour earlier, that'd be great too.
But how's that, would you think you can communicate to everyone in time, and everyone will be on board, if I mean, if you can, I think that's fine.
I should, I hope so, yeah.
Do you have any Facebook pages, questions around?
Well, yeah, that's gotta be a massive Facebook thing, on our website for the village, listen, we changed the half hour.
Parade, yeah, communication.
That's where it's key for everything.
Well, the kids all go home, there's a flyer that goes home, all the kids at school, all the time.
Okay. We're talking about people that come from all over, there's people that come from like all over the place, this parade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like our, uh-
It's the Greenwich Village, uh-
Yep, so that would be, you know, our website, everything, that, getting around on, on Facebook or whatever, listen, we had to move it half hour earlier, I'm sure the parents think, that's not gonna mind, it's at least a little more light for them and whatever, so you're not pushing back towards that dark, the dark time.
So, is the parade gonna start at four of us?
Well, it gathers at four and starts marching at four thirty, that's on, right?
No later than four thirty.
Okay.
There's a chance.
And when you, if you guys leave early, we're pushing you straight out to nine D and, and Fair.
And we would probably just let it go maybe another half hour, so maybe go to five thirty or so, so it gives, uh, people a time to get ready, you know?
Again, it's all communication on all of our parts, uh, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, and I have to get together also with the, with the fire department, talk about, you know, uh, a different emergency, if something happens, how we're gonna get things in and where they're gonna park and-
The, uh, the one thing we did, the, the start of, the start time you say is noon, but what time, we can't have people starting before eight o'clock setting up, when do you-
No, I usually say nine.
Okay.
Nine to eleven.
We, we had kinda left that open when Marzola was out there thinking, it wasn't a problem, but it was like, well, our, it's, you know, the event's from two or whatever, and it's like, well, it's not really, starting at nine, setting up, so.
Yeah, not many-
We just don't want people down, I think this one, they were down there earlier than that, so.
You know, if we had like artists, uh, if we, we'll have some artisans there, you know, a couple of vendors setting up, and if some of this is in town, you know?
I thought the last time you did have, you guys kinda opened at eleven, but you weren't serving until twelve.
Right, yeah, that messed everybody up, so we opened at twelve, the, the, everything's open.
And your tents, your tents were going-
I was trying to, I was trying to like get everybody in the flow.
No, no man rush, get in there, and they're probably standing in the field going, I wanna drink, I wanna drink.
Yeah, yeah.
Standing for an hour waiting for it to open up.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Generally, your tents go up the day before, right?
Yeah, we set up everything on Friday, and take all the regular tents down on Sunday, some tents that we have, which we'll have to secure, make sure, uh, we don't get anything blowing, which we plan on doing in larger states where those, um, and then the big tent usually gets taken down on Monday. Okay, so there is a tent actually sitting on the field on Sunday, if anybody wants to organize something. You get your money's worth, it's free, and, uh, maybe we can put a party together on there.
Anything else?
I just, um, yeah, the one here I wanted to discuss too, to clarify and make sure, and it's in the application, so if, I mean, John can step in notes, and that's deposit and repair, you and I talked about that when we did the walk, so.
I think what we wanna do is we wanna make the repairs ourselves, and we wanna, so we can do that to our satisfaction, and then move ahead with that, so that there's no, we did this, and no, that's not good, but we'd rather just, rather those guys go down and do it. We still have to go down and plant the grass that didn't grow, there's still those marks from the last, so, yeah, take care of that.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is the rain, I mean, if it's gonna rain, or if it's wet, we're, there, we really have to limit it, although, you might not be able to park in the pavilion if that's the case, if it's wet.
Totally, I totally agree, even if it rains a couple days.
So, we're gonna have to make that call, and you have to be aware of that, but-
Even if it rains a couple days before, but there probably should be no parking out there, so I totally-
So, we have somebody look at that and let you know, but that's something of concern.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's a, if you wanted to have a tent or something on the, I don't know, the infield, we just don't want cars or anybody driving there, right?
We don't want these stakes.
Yeah, what's that?
We don't want a tent, we don't want these stakes.
Better not have any of that.
Yeah, I think just block it off, you know, if we can build that thing, it'll look even better.
Right, okay.
So, I just had a question about rain, if it's really wet there, do you have a plan for, you know, the pathways and everything?
For, um-
If it isn't, if it does wind up being wet?
Yeah, well, the plan is that the two large tents, um, installed even before, even, like I talked to Dave, you know, say the weather says it's gonna rain Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'd like to be able to maybe have the tent company actually install it on Tuesday, or Monday, because they give you a week's window of time to have a tent up.
Yeah, I, I wasn't really thinking about, um, keeping rain off your desk seconds, I was thinking more about what do you do in the pathways where people are walking around, the, you know, the pedestrian corridors in your event, can you put hay or something? Um, can you put straw down or something?
Yeah, we could do straw.
Cause-
Yeah, that-
That works pretty well, I think, so.
It does, and, uh, Johnny Jackson up at, uh, Jackson's Farm has, uh, got plenty of it there, so we bought a whole bunch, and, and just so you know, and if anybody knows who can use straw or hay, because we do buy it for seating, and we bought thirty bales last time, and we had a really tough time getting rid of thirty bales of hay, from giving it away for free, okay? So, we actually bought a first cut, um, it's X million dollars per bale, we spent a couple hundred dollars, we, we tried to actually-
Real, real hay, like feed hay?
Yeah, yeah, feed hay, like, it got wet, it got rained on a little bit, and then once it rained on, you can't really give it to the horses, but you can give it to other animals, so.
Yeah.
We're willing to like donate to anybody, so we planned on buying thirty bales of hay, and then the next day after the festival, if anybody wants to take it, I had a tough time getting rid of it last time, uh-
I wish I knew.
Okay, so please, uh-
The goats could use it.
There'll be thirty bales of hay available to anybody, okay? We tried to offer it to the top field equestrian center.
Yeah.
But we found out that once it gets rained on, um, even for ten minutes, it can't be used by horses.
You might save some money just by straw.
Yeah, it's not as, uh, sturdy enough, because we use it for seating, and a lot of great pictures of people sitting on there, and said cheers.
I see, okay. I see.
And, and I, I did talk to John about if he wanted to set the tent up like because of rain earlier, I think what you were saying before, it's like, so if it's gonna rain Wednesday, Thursday, or whatever, we could set it up on things, so you're not gonna get charged for five days or something, we set the tent up, it's up, and then we don't have to do that a day after it rains.
Yeah.
Keep the case off the field, huh?
What's that?
Take you sort of-
Well, maybe, maybe they like it.
Don't, you know, fly right under the tent hangout.
A legend to make comfortable.
Okay, anything else you wanna add? We can, we can still tweak the, uh, thing, we can, you know, just approve the event if we wanna, over some of these things, we'll add it to something, an agenda.
Yeah, absolutely, we're flexible, and we, you know, hey, we wanna, we're part of the community, you know, we wanna make it, uh, a bit faster.
So, to board business, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve applications for Hops on the Hudson for October twenty-sixth, the Mayor's Park, um, the event was from twelve to five thirty.
What's second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's up to you, but we'll have to find out now, police are, uh-
Okay. Great, thank you, thanks a lot, I appreciate it, and just so that you know too, what we're gonna be doing, and this is actually, we're gonna be doing twenty thousand of these, okay, for Cold Spring, so we're doing twenty thousand of these, these are gonna be our flyers, they're gonna go into every brewery that comes to our events, and the reason why, then they'll be advertising opportunities if anybody wants, so, we're actually putting Cold Spring on the map, so this is from Staten Island and Queens, Brooklyn, and it's really the Hudson River, our artistic work that we've decided to use, and then it's gonna be, there's gonna be no roads anywhere, it'll be just county names, and then all the brewers, and then any vendors who wanna go on it, will be identified throughout the whole Hudson Valley, so.
John, what's on the front?
Uh, it'll be just like information about the festival and stuff, you know, in the back.
So, what I thought, think would be a good idea is to get some of those to the C Street.
Yeah, that would probably be a great idea.
Uh, to have them on the boat, uh, for the day that they come off, so you may have some potential customers.
We can, we can all get together, we can-
Well, what we're gonna do actually is we're gonna start distributing these in September, um, and we're gonna, my wife and I are gonna travel a couple thousand miles, and go up and down the Hudson River, put these in a brewery, craft beer store, and restaurant.
So, as it turns out, I were at the C Street, I wouldn't want the map that shows the public transportation routes, because I wouldn't want people taking public transportation instead of the C Street, so, do you have, do you have an electronic version of that?
We're gonna put an electronic version together, yeah.
So, so with that, we can just send it to the C Street, it monitors on the boats that show different things on the dr- on the line up here, and so they could show that as something to do.
Oh, that'd be nice. Yep, okay, great.
And they like, uh, the information, the communication, like you put up.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, 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 so, um, yeah, so that's what we plan on doing to sort of promote the, uh, the town and the trade.
I just have one other thing from last night, so I'm trying to go through all the things we discussed, and the other one was event signage, that came up last night, so the application probably should be clear about what signage is allowed for ticketed events, so, anybody who has something they wanna?
Well, I think, well, the only thing I'd do, the banners, is we're allowing the banners to go up, we have, down in Mayor's Park, and it has to have the slits in it for wind, so that it doesn't pull the fence down, um, that's the only place we want a banner, as far as major, I think we have to allow something out the end of Fair Street, or-
Yes, right here, for the, for the day of the event.
For the day of the event.
An A-frame would be perfect.
Yeah.
You know, an A, actually, an A-
Just for the day of the event.
Yeah, but sandwich board.
You put a sandwich board up on, on this sidewalk, I mean, this place is, I mean, I live, I live here, let me tell you, you cannot walk down the street, one more thing on the sidewalk.
There's a pole, there's a pole across the street, the, the utility pole, you put it right in front of that, there's no way they're walking in between that, they either go on the le- they either go on the left or the right of the pole, you know, the pole we're talking about?
So, that's a directional sign.
Yeah, and we'll point that way.
And then one at the end of Fair Street, which is a property, and you can do whatever you want down there.
So, each end of Fair?
Our focus is really like, actually just something to advance and stuff in social media world, so, you know, the day of the event, uh-
But there were a lot, what are those other signs that have, you know, like-
Stakes on, that are all over the county, this, they have the wire mesh stakes that go in, yeah, they're all accounting for everything, anytime elections come up, they put them everywhere, and over here, you know, right on three oh one.
We have no control over it.
Yeah.
We can only control within our-
Like three oh one here, when they have the festival, Shake the Festival, they have the Oscar Bowl.
We can't, uh, we can't dictate what happens along, uh, State Highway, which is ninety, we can do is identify, um, and, and by the way, that's where the majority of the political signs go, is along ninety, what we, what we can do is control, um, three oh one, and any of the side streets.
Right.
And Main Street, I mean, there was, there was, I mean, we have those beautiful new, beautiful flowers, you know, along the, the, the borders, and there were signs in those.
We did have a two mile-
Yeah, no, they, they- Take them out and throw them away?
Yes. No, I mean, I, I think, I agree, take them out to a little bit, but I think the application should say what's, uh, signage is allowed and signage is not allowed, you know, so we're staying for the advanced signage, banners along the fence one week prior, and then directional signs, the day of the event on Fair Street.
On the corner of Fair Street and Main Street.
Yeah, Fair and Main, okay, and Fair and nine.
And not nine, ninety.
Ninety, yeah, ninety.
Also, I can, that, we can't dictate that, that's not our property.
What?
Ninety and four.
Fair and ninety, it's not our property.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't say about that.
She's just saying Fair Street and Main, Main Street.
Okay, that's, tell them. After them, whether they're, they're sat on the other side.
Palais Bouchon.
So, the plan, so we don't allow signage?
No, no.
No, absolutely not.
So, no signage?
But I don't know, like, can you, can we actually stop people from putting signs up, like you got saying, going around one terrace on the grass, even though it's, it's village?
If it's on private property, we can't, if it's on public property, so if it's on the sidewalk, or what's called the utility strip, which is the property between the sidewalk and the curb- Which is the property between the sidewalk and the curb, we can't.
I thought there was some freedom of speech thing you did for a certain amount of time.
That's on private property, uh, the freedom of speech thing, Doug, the court case.
Yeah.
Private property.
I think that you were allowed to do, okay.
Okay, so no signage on Main Street?
Any, yeah, or any village.
Well, we can't stop sign, we're letting people put signs down at Luntara's, so we can't say for this event, you can't do that because.
It's private property.
The corner of, right, they should.
Right on that corner? I thought that was our property.
Hudson House has their sign that says Hudson House, spend breakfast. With sign, they can, they can leave that there. So they wanna put signs there, you really can't tell them. Basically, what I know what you're looking for, I would just leave it with not the planters, not anywhere near the planters or on the planters. No, no trees. People try to.
We need the grass, yes, the grass utility.
That's already, we already have guys remove, remove those.
Seems like this is getting out of the realm of.
What you got to.
You know, like the recreation department's responsible for Mayor's Park and not like the signage on it.
Well, no, she's.
No, I'm sorry, we're responsible for the application that anyone, not just you, but anyone who does truly understands what's acceptable and not acceptable. If they're allowed, if the board, the trustees approve them to have a ticketed event at Mayor's Park. Yeah, we don't want things after the fact, which is what we're trying to do now. I'd rather have them, that's why this whole process, we started this whole application process two years ago. Was to make sure that everything was specific so that we didn't have people running around, are people calling, are people upset?
Yep.
You know, I mean, a lot of work's been done to make Main Street very attractive. I mean, you know, you see all the, um, business people putting up, you know, flowers down and everything. I don't think they want, you know, during the busiest time of the year for the front of their stores.
I think it should be in the application.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what, that's what it looks like.
How about the fence right in front of the Chamber of Commerce? That's really a great spot for a banner, just so you know, you know, if you want somebody to, no.
We've stopped that every year, and you try to do that. It's not the Chamber of Commerce, that's public bathrooms down there.
Right.
I mean.
Right, and this is.
And we've, we've said every time somebody puts a banner up there that we don't want them down. No big banners on Main Street.
Not yours.
Yeah, but you put, we took yours down last year.
I mean, I think one of the things to do, and this is totally not, not in this discussion or was part of this discussion, but is we need to have a banner to poll somewhere, like for a street sign, a banner going across the street. Something, the chamber and the vendors or people should get together and work on and somehow, that way you could raise it up easier or whatever. You don't have to be breaking a law by putting it on telephone poles. And, you know, they do it in the other street, you know, the cities or villages where they have a banner going across. And if there were designated poles for that, then you could do it. Legally, we're not even supposed to do the Fourth of July. But if you had one, and that's an ideal place for one also, and if there was something there and that'd be something, you should talk to them.
Well, you know, it's like, you know, the other day when they had the Bible camp sign up at St. Mary's on Hillside.
That's the property.
Right, right. That they actually could get paid for me to put my thing on there.
Is there any objection to the, right, it's private property.
We're trying to object, you have to talk to them.
So you just talk to them, do those things, well, you know, they need money.
But didn't you put one at the store? You put one on the, on the little gas station with the little.
Yeah, I did, yeah, yeah. But I don't think that's, but that, right, it's, but I was thinking in the hillside there, maybe instead of that, you know, going across the street.